Good evening. This is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Board meeting. The board has been in closed session since 6:00 for the items listed on the agenda. We have all seven board members present and we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one on the list. Are there any other public comments? Okay. We will move on then to approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes to the December 18th or January 8th minutes? All right, then the December 18th, 2018, and January 8th, 2019 minutes stand as presented. Any changes to the closed session minutes for December 18th and January 8th? Okay, there are none, then the closed session minutes for December 18th, 2018, and January 8th, 2019 stand as presented. All right. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items before we have a motion? Margaret?
Yes, I'd like to remove item D, approval of revision to policy 6310, from the consent agenda.
Anything else? I need a motion for the consent agenda minus item D.
I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A, personnel report, B, financial reports, C, approval of RFP number 1902.
I'll second. Motion by Karen, second by Shannon. Go ahead.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, the motion carries. Do I have a motion for the item that was pulled?
Okay. I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading the revisions to policy 6:310, credit for alternative courses and programs and course substitutions which will become effective at the time of its adaption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education's Section 6 instruction.
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, so I pulled this item because I thought there was a lot of discussion on this when this first came up and I thought before we just went through it, we give kind of a history of what has occurred and where we are as of today with that. So could we just get some background information on what this policy is, the changes that have been made, and how that will impact us in the future?
So I would defer to Jim or John if they would like to comment because they were actually at the meeting, but we authorized the high school to move forward with its PE waiver, but at the last policy meeting, this was, I guess, kind of an oversight because of the time lag to make sure that we had the policy in place to support the new practice. So what we're doing is making sure that before this goes into effect, that our policy will support the decision to move forward in that direction.
Right, and thank you for that. And I guess what I was looking for, I mean, this was, this discussion had come up a while ago and it was more encompassing, and there was discussion about how we would be able to implement this. And as I recall, you're right, you took it to the, looked at it for high school and you took it to the York administration team and they went back to see how they could possibly impact this, what this would mean. There were some particular criteria that would be called out on here, and in particular, if I recall, freshman year for the courses of health and sophomore year for the courses of driver's ed, that if there was, you know, if there was some overlap, they would still, they would not be dismissed from their sport if there was some overlap. So I guess I'm trying to just make sure we have all the criteria so it's understood.
So that, the actual proposal itself, I don't have in front of me, but the issue was that we all knew we wanted to move forward with giving students and families choice and flexibility, but I asked for a little bit of time to make sure that we could verify that the high school, there's any staffing or space implications or logistical managing, scheduling implications, that they had a chance to look through it. What they came back with, with the recommendation related to the two areas that you're referring to, is that they can't, they can't hand schedule kids around the sports they might participate in and when they get those required courses. So if it, if it happens that the seasons overlap with that, the families won't be able to change their schedules and do the kind of things that would allow them to get PE and ultimately get that waiver. If they, if they're able, if they're in PE during their season, then, then, then they have a system in place that will allow them to offer that opportunity. So they were looking at one time seeing if they could offer health and driver ed the same year, but there were some logistical issues with doing that and so they just, they felt that they could implement the option of the waiver, but they couldn't find a way to do it at the expense of being able to guarantee that every kid that wanted it could get it if their season happened to overlap with when they were scheduled into health or driver ed. And I, you know, Mark's not here tonight. Mark was out of state at a family commitment and was expecting to be back for the board meeting, but of course, that you can understand why he's not here. So he worked more directly with the high school on that, so if you want me to go back and pull up the recommendation, I can do that, but to the best of my understanding, that was essentially the high points of that?
Yeah, those were the high points. In addition to that, there's actually only one minor change to the policy, which removes the restriction of a student having to be in 11th or 12th grade to be able to take advantage of being involved in an interscholastic sport. So by making that one change to the policy, it frees it up for 9th through 12th graders to participate at the same level that previously had been allowed for only 11th and 12th graders. So it's one very, very small change to the policy, but that very small change to the policy brought about some logistical concerns at the high school. My understanding is that those logistical concerns have been resolved.
Thank you. And just for the community and board docs under the December 18th meeting, it has the information, like the logistics that we discussed at that meeting. Stephanie. Any other discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, the motion passes. All right, superintendent's agenda action items, the approval to authorize a staffing increase of 4.1 full-time.
So we got some feedback from our principals on a variety of different areas last summer, and one of the things that was pretty consistent would be, was their interest in hoping that they could get some additional assistant principal support in their buildings, and that would help with evaluations, 504s, student supervision, and would allow, allow us to free them up to spend some more time in classrooms, planning professional learning, and focusing on their school improvement plans and their instructional responsibilities. And so when you take a look at staffing recommendations in different sources, including the evidence-based funding model, we have a difficult time figuring out a way to staff assistant principals in the district currently because our buildings are at varying sizes. But the model that we used with the .5 principal at Hawthorne and Lincoln has worked well. The key is that you have to try to have them in a building for a full day when they're scheduled, and then the principals have to work together effectively, but you don't want to try to split up mornings and afternoons and things like that because that doesn't work well. So we've kind of figured out the different ways to make that work, and so the recommendation includes having a .5 assistant principal at each of the buildings, and it would ultimately, after boundary adjustments kick in, it would, the pairings that we have would be by feeder pattern and would be roughly equal enrollments, and in addition, would allow us to have the proper amount of administrative support that we need to go through some of these very intense periods of time where we have to go through transitions and have to have principals involved in facilities planning and staffing and other things that are going to be not, not part of what would currently be normal operations. The other position would be to increase the instructional coach at Madison from .5 to 1.0. We've tried the .5 model there, and we've gone through three coaches in three years. It is difficult to hire and retain, and what we currently have right now is a person that's split among a couple different buildings, and so that's compromising three different buildings. And so we know that that, that model can't work next year, so we have to do something else, whatever that is. And so we would like to move them to a 1.0 FTE for instructional coaching, which would make them then consistent also with all the other elementary attendance centers that we have. And then the third piece of this is Bill Riddle, the high school department chair, is retiring, and we would like to fill that position with a person who serves as a high school department chair, but then also serves as a district fine arts coordinator. And we think that's important because the, there's not been a lot of coordination of the lower grade level music program. We've had trouble filling some of the coordinator positions, and so this would, this would provide some articulation between and among grade levels and provide some direction and coordination of the various performances and curriculum and other things in the music program. And also help us when we move into the planning for the auditoriums and properly support an auditorium manager type of concept. We currently have trouble at York in that area because we, we have a lot of people with hands on the equipment and other things like that, that creates various, various different problems along the way with the different groups that use that. So that, that would result in an increase total of 4.1 FTE. We're not through with staffing yet, but we anticipate with staffing through some of the middle school reorganization and some other things that we anticipate by looking at our enrollment trends, that we will have some other things that will offset the increase. I just can't give you a specific number right now because I, I wouldn't be able to support it and feel comfortable that, that we know for certain what that's going to look like. Staffing will be completed at the end of this month, and so about the middle of February is when we'll have a better idea of the staffing at the teacher level. So that's, that's the, those are, those are the main points, I think, of this particular recommendation.
Do you have a motion, and then we'll discuss?
I move that the Board of Education authorizes staffing increase of 4.1 FTE at a cost of approximately $372,000.
Second.
Okay, questions? Karen?
Yeah, Dave, you're bringing this to the board at this point, I mean, based on what you just described of the staffing in middle of February. The key is, is to, this is the right timing to hire the best, strongest candidates, right? I mean, the timing is what's right.
Yes, Karen, I wish I had said that initially, so I appreciate that you brought it up. If the high school, you know, obviously wanted to know how to move forward, its staffing, its, its program right now, but there are hiring cycles, and if we were to wait until we completely had all of the master scheduling done at the buildings, we would be posting these positions after many of the best candidates would already be interviewing in other districts.
Jim?
And just kind of a technical question. The district fine arts coordinator would not be teaching any classes, would not have an ensemble, so would they be on purely an administrative contract rather than a teacher's contract?
Well, that's an interesting question because they are not, they are not, they would not be teaching. So that's where the FTE comes into play, is to cover Bill Riddle's teaching load at the high school. We, if they're not teaching, we could make that an administrative position, but currently the other department chairs at the high school are part of the bargaining unit, so if we wanted to do that, I would think that we would want to maybe have kind of a comprehensive plan moving forward about what we want to do with those positions. If we want to try to do this with this particular position, because this is, is the position that's open, and then if I know that, I would post it that way, but I still also think that I would, that we'd have to sit down with the job description and do a couple internal things to take a look at, at how we would place that person for salary, you know, because it's, it'd be a new position. Our department chairs have not been technically been administrators in this district in the past, but it would be possible to start to move in that direction. There are different types of models that would allow for that.
I'll, I'll support it either way, but it seems like a good opportunity to start moving in that direction.
So let me, let me continue those conversations and then provide some additional information related to how that could look.
Thank you.
Chris?
So I'm going to ask, ask Jim to remind me of this ratio of admin cost per, what's your, yes, what do we spend on, you haven't?
Yeah, I mean, so our administrator costs, last time I looked, and maybe Mr. Welton has an update, but of the 900 or so school districts in Illinois, only seven have a, invest less in administration than we do by evidence, by the cost, administrative cost per pupil ratio that the Illinois State Report Card calculates. But maybe Mr. Welton has an update, maybe we, maybe now there's more, there's eight or nine that's been less than we do, but it can't be more than that.
If I remember correctly, there's a pretty decent chasm we'd have to cross to make it to the top half.
Yeah, yeah, it's not the part of the bell curve you want to be in.
So, and then the other part of this, and I think we've had these kinds of conversations, is just basically the size of our district and kind of, you know, if we were running this from an administrative standpoint, you know, the optimal size of the district is much larger than ours now, and that in our comparable districts, compared to districts and districts around us, these kinds of positions exist at the individual school level. You know, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong as I'm going off here, but I think what Dave's been trying to do is, is add capacity within the administrative level to support our teachers, to support professional development within a changing educational landscape, and I think we've seen the fruits of that labor, but he's trying to do it in a way that may not be textbook from the idea that if you had a much larger district, it would be very easy to draw the org chart, and now you're putting a half here and a half there, and as we are evolving, we are evolving our organizational structure. So I think taking the fact that we don't, we don't overspend on administration and the impact that it's had on our kids even since the last several years as Dave started to add a few of these positions, you know, I think I fully support Dave and what he's trying to do here, but I think we also have to recognize that this is, you know, work in progress and will continue to evolve as we move along.
Shannon?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendation. I think it's important for principals to be in the classroom versus, you know, in their office doing the teacher evaluations, which will take up a significant amount of time. So to offload some of that is really important, so they can be up and about and moving around and interacting with teachers more on a daily basis.
Oh, can I ask something? Could Mary, you, since Kathy's not here, Dave, but could you just articulate a little bit and maybe even, you know, because it's been working at Hawthorne and Lincoln, how that sort of helps with some of the special learning populations? We're talking a lot about social, emotional, just having that additional administrator available in the building, like what kind of help or support or what does that look like for the?
It's going to support our buildings quite a bit. One aspect would be somewhat managerial, but facilitating some of the IEP meetings that take place. When our principals are in those meetings, that means there's not an administrator available to be out and about in the building, supporting kids. As you know, at an elementary level, when something happens, whether it's an incident on the playground or in a classroom or anywhere in the building, at that age, you want to deal with it immediately because that's when it's most impactful to have those conversations with kids. And so when you're talking about restorative justice versus being a disciplinarian and really trying to support our students moving through dealing with conflict or escalating behavior, you want to have someone who's available and someone who has been out and about in the building enough that has a relationship with the kids.
Jim, did you have something else?
I was just going to elaborate on what Shannon was saying, that I completely agree that, you know, a few years ago, the state increased dramatically the amount of time principals have to spend on teacher evaluation, and we have done nothing in that meantime to support the principals in that increased workload that, that, that the new law puts upon them. So I think this, giving some principals some help will go a long way toward getting our principals focused back to where they should be, and that's, you know, managing the people in their building and providing the leadership, the educational leadership that our kids deserve.
Anybody else? All right, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, the motion passes. Next on the agenda, approval of resolution, resolution of the Board of Education transferring money from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund.
This is an annual occurrence, so Chris, if you want to introduce it?
This is an annual occurrence, Ed, is for transferring from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund as required by the accounting manual to pay for the debt certificates related to the stadium and the administration center.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer money from the Operations and Maintenance Funds to the Debt Service Funds for the purpose of payment of debt certificates for fiscal year 19.
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, motion passes. All right, next on the agenda, approval of resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by Community Unit School District Number 205, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois.
So this resolution allows us to spend some district money on some of the preliminary work that we need to do to get to the design phase of this project prior to being in receipt of the funds from the referendum, and then pay us back when those funds become available. And so I anticipate that, that there might be some discussion of this as it relates to the finance committee report later, but if you think we should go further, yeah, okay.
Motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by the Community Unit School District Number 205, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, Chris?
All right, as Dave said, one of the, one of the topics that we talked about within the finance committee was the ability to use cash on hand to kind of prepay expenses and then borrow the money back and repay ourselves later, which saves us the interest on that debt. So very simplistically, we're going to put a resolution in place that allows us to track that and pay that back, which then delays the issuance of the bonds and the payment of interest starting later. And that will likely go on as, as we can find opportunities to do that over the course of the entire set of projects that are going on here. The initial savings is, you know, well over a million dollars potentially, depending on where interest rates go, just by waiting what we believe could be almost a year to issue bonds and using our own cash for the meantime. And at any point in time there, if we needed it, we could issue the bonds earlier and just bring the cash in. So it's kind of a bridging effect that also helps, helps the district save money and the taxpayer save money. So that's, this resolution that's up here now is, is one of the tools that we need to put in place to allow us to pay ourselves back when we do that.
And just for clarification, because this was talked about in the finance committee, but does this in any way change the construction process?
Just to clarify, and it does not change the date, is what you meant by it, yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no nays, the motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of foundation donation of Sprint mobile hotspot devices for students.
So the foundation has done this before, and I think there was a little bit of delay in getting this on the agenda for some reason, but apparently we finally have those details worked out where we where we are now able to accept this donation and get wireless capability into the families of our students that don't currently have that access. So it's same as we've done before, and we're ready to move forward.
Motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the District 205 Foundation's donation of $2,650 for the purchase of Sprint mobile hotspot devices for student use as part of the Sprint Connect Ed program.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on behalf of the Board and the District, I'd like to thank the community for contributing and supporting the foundation and for all of the hard work that the foundation does for us. I mean, I know that, I remember when this program first came out, it just made a difference for our students. And especially as we were looking at deploying application of technology in the classroom, it was really imperative that this be done. And it was great that it was already in the works and the foundation saw that and continues to support us, so thank you.
Yeah, I too want to add a special thanks to the foundation and talk about this is one of the ways that we, that the community helps and supports some of the processes to have in place to make sure we have a more equitable process in place. So there's been, this is one example of how the community steps up. And I think we're going to talk about some other examples, how we're working through with our community to make sure we have some equitable alignment of resources.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes.
All right, next on the agenda, approval of donations for York and Hawthorne.
So the Hawthorne donation is a $95,000 donation for a playground, for a new playground at their school. As you know, Jackson and Jefferson have recently issued substantial donations to support playgrounds. And one of the big things that people want to move toward is the idea of the synthetic surfaces. And so what we did when we were approached about this in conjunction with the new school construction and Todd taking a look at the long-term master facility plan, Todd has been able to develop a plan that will ensure that over the next four or five years as this construction project moves along, that all of our schools will have similar play structures with synthetic surfaces and has built that into his budgeting process. So this donation to the district actually, in the long run, helps save us the expense of having to bring Hawthorne up to par with district funds. And then the next schools that would be on the docket would be Fisher in the summer of 2020 and then Edison in the summer of 2021 to coincide with the construction of the new school there, Lincoln in 2022 to coincide with the construction of the new school there. So these are staggered over the next couple of years, but there is a plan through the master facilities process, be it through summer, through the annual summer maintenance budgeting or the new school construction to make sure that we have similar play structures at every site. The York donation is from the Youth Travel Baseball Program to the baseball program at the high school in the amount of $2,000. And you see there the areas where the head coach at York intends to spend the money. So those are the two donations that we have for you tonight. That got added, I'm sorry. That, we talked about that and I forgot that that came back to us. I wanted to get some clarity because I didn't understand exactly what this was all about. So Mike DeNove, the Social Studies Department Chair, I think we brought this up before, actually in some public reports, has been involved in this statewide coalition and they have been accepted into this cohort. And they have been targeted as a school that would receive $3,000 donation from the Robert McCormick Foundation to help support this aspect of their social studies programming at the high school.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the donation from the Hawthorne School PTA in the amount of $95,000 for a new playground, the donation from the Elmhurst Youth Travel Baseball Program for baseball equipment in the amount of $2,000, and the donation from the Robert R. McCormick Foundation in the amount of $3,000 to pursue and implement projects and programs related to improving civic education and closing achievement gaps. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, on behalf of the Board and the District, I know Dave touched upon it when he talked about the Hawthorne donation. And I know there were long discussions about that over a couple of years, for sure. So we wanted to thank the Hawthorne parents and the Hawthorne community for helping us out in this way. You know, David talked about equity. Margaret said that we would be talking about it. It's been a discussion a lot, and that's really what we expect from our staff, to be looking at it and helping more clearly communicate it so that people are understanding it. So once again, even as we introduced this donation, you know, Dave was clear. We heard from Todd Schmidt previously, and we will, I think, next month, on what the plans are and how we're doing this equitably for all of our students across the district. So to the Hawthorne family, PTA community, thank you.
And there are two York donations. I'd like to thank the Elmhurst Youth Travel Baseball Program for the equipment that they are donating and also thank the Robert McCormick Foundation. It's a $3,000 donation to improve civic education by providing professional development for teachers and also supporting a student summit so students can understand more about civics. Oh, and the last thing I want to say about that is the grant is renewable, so we can continue to receive funds through this program. And it started from York's award of being recognized as a democracy school. So I want to congratulate York High School on that achievement.
Margaret?
And I just want to circle back around there because I know this is, I want to be very intentional and make sure we're clear. I first and foremost want to acknowledge Hawthorne PTA and thank them for this generous donation. At the same time, I also want to recognize, as we have been reminded many times, that all school PTAs may not have the luxury of raising and/or having community members donate such a large sum. That's where it gets to the point of, because we have these donations, we can look within our buckets and find other ways to make sure that they're equitable resources. And that's what has been discussed about what has been done. So I want to be sure to address this. We recognize this. We gladly accept donations from our community. They help us to make sure we are able to achieve equity and we divvy up those resources accordingly. So thank you for the PTA. Thank you for all the community members who help us support our schools. And we are always constantly looking at, how can we make sure that all the resources are equitably distributed?
John?
Just to follow up on Margaret's excellent comments, equity was a key value in the referendum, in putting together the referendum program. And it is one of the things that was essentially a driver of putting that together. The equity value is right here. Every gift is accepted pursuant to Policy 880, which specifically calls out equity of our resources. All means all, we mean it. And I think both the Board and the Administration are truly dedicated to make sure that equity will be done. This enormous donation challenges us to commit to what we said we did. And I appreciate the Administration putting together the program and putting it out there to show that equity is in the program for all our schools. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes. Next up is Superintendent's Communication Facilities Update.
So over time, there will be different types of reports that we will bring forward, either through my comments or some formal comments from Todd and updates on the project. But as of right now, we're still in a lot of the initial planning stages, so I'm just updating you with dates of the various meetings that are scheduled. An important one, tomorrow night is the first all-day kindergarten committee meeting. The school meetings at Edison, or Thursday, yeah, it's Thursday, the 24th, I'm sorry. The school meetings with the principals at Edison and Bryan took place and the meetings with their school. Planning teams are scheduled and a series of meetings with other specialty areas. The Safety Committee meeting is Thursday afternoon. And all of these things continue to move on. And so I will update you with these so that you can keep track of the work that's going on and that the community can. And then as we get a little bit further along, there will be other types of updates that occur as well.
All right, Freedom of Information Act requests?
So there was one Freedom of Information Act request that we received regarding information on the district budget, and that request was granted.
And next, we have Tweet of the Week.
Thank you to the Board for this time to talk about the great things going on in our district. And this week's social media honor goes to Edison Elementary's Makerspace Twitter feed. And their address, if you'd like to follow along, is @AddisonStudio205. And this particular post captures second graders making robots. And their hashtag is #They'reNutsAndBoltAboutRobots. All puns intended. And of course, that always falls under our hashtag of IgniteD205. Just congratulations to the Edison Makerspace Twitter feed. Again, encouraging everyone to follow along and take a dive into the IgniteD205 hashtag and really see some of the great things that are going on. Great job.
Thank you. Next, we have Finance and Operations Committee Report. Are you going to be as cute as that?
I was going to say, they look like they had more fun than we did. That said, I do have to thank David Lau, Rob Martinelli, and Gordon Schneider, the Citizens Rep for the Finance Committee, for spending what I'm sure was the highlight of their week with us on Tuesday night. Or was that Thursday? That was Thursday night. So on with it. The first topic of conversation we covered earlier, which was bond financing. Elizabeth Hennessy came in and kind of reiterated the scheduling that we had, but then suggested an option to save some money by using our own cash to pay some initial expenses and then borrowing that later. We talked about continuing to look at options to break up the borrowing into smaller pieces, to, again, not borrow a bunch of money right away and then having it sit around in cash while we wait to spend it. To optimize that structure, that will necessarily need some input from Todd Schmidt and his group as they go through the process here and get more concrete with the timing of the financial needs for the project, at which point we'll try to match up a borrowing schedule to that, taking into account our cash. So that was generally that conversation. So Chris, I think that to do out of that was just to bring the resolution to the meeting, which we just did. And her presentation is on public in the board docs for that committee meeting. The second topic of conversation was demographic study. We had talked through the previous demographic study, and then the question had kind of come up that said, you know, this one's getting old, when do we want to do a new one? And I think that the general consensus of the committee was, I believe, later. The longer you can wait, the better because the better the information will be as you get close to opening these schools. The other question was the ability, and trying to figure out best practices in other areas with growing districts, is to how firms integrate local factors at a much more granular level than just the city of Elmhurst, recognizing that demographic studies, when they get to the district as a whole, generally have been pretty close to on point, but when you start to get to the building level, they get difficult. And so we kind of, we talked through certain opportunities to integrate that local flavor into the quantitative analysis, whether it's knocking on doors around the neighborhoods and counting strollers or other ways that other districts may have done it. So I think we've asked Chris to go back and talk to several demographic study firms and other districts and come back with a recommendation on how to move forward. I think ultimately, it's going to end up with an RFP for a number of firms, and those are going to be the questions in them. Feel free to jump in if I've missed anything there. Any questions or comments on that? All right, the next item up, Todd Schmidt had asked for approval to establish a group of qualified architects and engineers for smaller projects. So while White is working on a lot of the big stuff with the build program here, there are a lot of little things that come up that either aren't big enough to get the attention of White or to where White would be more expensive. And Todd believes he can save the district money by having a stable of smaller architects and engineers to handle some of these smaller projects. So again, Chris, help me, if I say this right, I think what he wants to do is interview qualified vendors and then bring individual contracts to us as he has a need. Is that... Okay. Next, Chris had given us a preview of the PMA projections. I think that the main point of discussion there was the assumptions that were used as we went through that. And those will be brought to the Board.
Jim expects to have a solid staffing number by February 15, which we would discuss and, you know, bring forward in time to coincide with all the staffing deadlines that hit in March. As far as presenting the PMA proj- want those numbers to be, but if you just want a decent overview picture of what we're anticipating at this point based on the assumptions that we showed at the Finance Committee meeting, then we could bring those PMA projections forward at the business meeting in February or at the, we're currently planning, I believe, tentatively on doing this at the meeting, the first meeting in February, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think they come in conjunction with the staffing recommendations so we know the impact of what it is we're approving from the staffing side of it. And those are, I think, Chris, the initial ones are on the public drive? So those are there. As you can see, this year is going to show a significant negative number, which, to remind everyone, has to do with the timing of property tax receipts because they were accelerated because of the change in the tax law. So last year, we had this significant surplus. This year, we're going to run a deficit, but if you add the two together, that's where you get a truer picture of what we're doing. And then I think going forward, I think it's, over the next couple of years beyond that, it's modestly break even to slightly negative, plus or minus within a point or one or two percent of revenue. So I think it's, I don't think there's anything to necessarily highlight beyond that at this point in time coming out of that conversation.
Our initial plan was to bring this forward on February 12th, so I think if, we'll just plan on doing that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
And then the other piece, I think, was just a conversation around taking another look at our fund balance policy. And I think looking at, we had some input from the auditor, I think, last time when the auditor was here, looking at other districts and how they handle it, but also I think what we really tried to engineer that policy for is to avoid running out of money on May 31st. So we did want to look into the idea, the concept of orienting the policy more towards maintaining a minimum cash balance at the low point rather than kind of backing into it at June. So that's something Chris is looking through, and I think will come back to us with ideas or options.
Yeah, I'll have that at the Finance Committee meeting, March 12th.
Okay. So that's PMA projections. What's that? Yeah, I think that's the first, I don't know what he's going to say, so I think we'll see what he has, and then we'll filter stuff out and bring it here. Then York Bookstore, and Chris, you can help me with this one too. So the bookstore contract is up for renewal with Bex. I think that that was the general catalyst for, the general question is how, is there anything we can do to help our parents with the fees at the high school level? And I think, and it started basically as just what's the cost for books? I think that's led to an overall conversation that have a couple of prongs to them. The first one is just a review of how we select texts in general and how curriculum is developed at the high school. Things like looking at the 10 most expensive textbooks that we use in the district and see whether there's cheaper options to do the same thing. I think it's a fine line as we walk through balancing, making sure we have a robust curriculum, but at the same time being pragmatic around the cost of our textbooks. And ultimately, I think the game changer is moving towards open source content and away from textbooks because the textbook publishers seem to think that a digital copy with zero marginal cost should charge the same as a printed copy. It doesn't seem like you really save that much money with digital, you know, except that does provide you with a rental model where you can rent the digital text for a year, so that can save money. And so we've asked Bex to look at a rental model as well. And the issue with the rental model is that it works as long as you have a commitment to use the book. And committing to use the book at this stage in the evaluation process for Mark is difficult to make because we're not sure what's going to get switched in or switched out. And if Bex sees that we're not using it next year, then they're going to wholesale it out and then the value, it's a math problem at that point, and we've asked them to sharpen their pencil on that. So again, Mark's looking at the curriculum side at York with the department chairs and the teachers. You know, Chris and I have been looking at the bookstore manager side of it, separating out kind of the cost to manage the bookstore from the cost of the books, and looking at opportunities to save money on the management side, but then also potentially save money on the book side through, whether it's a rental model or whether it's some resourcing or, I mean, that's one of the things that we continue to work through with Bex. And then the other thing was looking at the other fees that are charged the high school kids, you know, everything from band orchestra to activities and things like that. I think that that is a conversation, while we started the conversation, it's a conversation best held with all seven of us at the Board table, and I think that what we agreed is that Chris is going to bring that discussion to the Board in the ordinary course of our fee approval. And we've asked them to look at opportunities and recommendations to save money for our parents from the fee perspective as well. So that will be coming to a future Board meeting, as is the normal flow for fees.
Chris, I think that just FYI purposes, that would be the first Board meeting in April that would coincide with the research, the resource conversation about displaying textbooks so that we could tie that in with both research and the technology report and the fee report, because it kind of fits, so that's what we're thinking at this point.
And then with Bex, you know, I think there'll be an upcoming recommendation on where to go with that, whether it's a contract that we want to stick with them or we want to go out to bid or whatnot, and I think we're in preliminary conversations with them on that. Timing wise, Chris, what are we looking for?
Not sure yet. We're working with them.
Their contract ends...
Not until September or October.
Okay, so after the next book sales?
After the next book sales, but we want to figure it out.
Yeah.
This spring at some point, but we'll see how it transpires with negotiations or doing an RFP.
Right. And so I think we're trying to work with them to kind of look at, on one level, look at everything we spend on the management side of the bookstore and see if there's opportunities for savings in labor, looking at processes that we have now that require labor that maybe we can do more efficiently and then save money at the management level, because every dollar that we save on the management fee, you know, allows us to cut the price of the overall bookstore experience. And then, again, look through the rental model. Again, it's probably, it's running in parallel with what Mark's doing, to the extent there's an opportunity to commit to a textbook for three, four, or five years, there could be some significant savings in a rental model there. But again, I think what we're doing now is just creating options to marry towards what the curriculum is, because I don't think we want the finance driving the curriculum. So that's, is there anything else on that?
About textbooks. I mean, I hear different feedback, like mostly, I guess, from students about online textbooks. Some textbooks are preferable to still have the hard copy, others electronic, so I don't totally agree with, I don't know, I wasn't at the Finance meeting, but to have every textbook be online, I don't, I'd like to dig into that a little bit more and, you know, see what makes most sense from a student's perspective also.
Right, and that's the purpose of what Mark's doing and the work that he's doing with the folks over there is looking through the opportunities for online textbooks, but then also open source content, and as they go through curriculum review. But that's a whole, like, I'm guessing that's probably going to, learning and teaching at some point in time, you know, before it comes here. What we're doing is basically saying, if you want to use a textbook, we can either have the parent buy it, new, buy it used, or rent it. If you're not using a textbook, if you're using an electronic source, there may be an opportunity to license those for multiple years and save some money by selling then single-year licenses. There's just pieces, but we're just dealing with, how do we facilitate what the curriculum side decides? And each book may be a different answer. I don't know, and so that's what Mark's working on.
More discussion on that side, absolutely, and then I think we'll work with Bex to try to tailor a solution that works best with what our curriculum folks decide.
I think Shannon brings up a good point. When this does get to learning and teaching, we need to figure out how to get the student's opinion and preference into the format of the textbook or the delivery of the information. It's a very good point. Let's be student-centric and get the student's opinion.
So I hear balancing the finance with, you know, the student and staff input and still, you know, make sure that the curriculum is solid and looking forward. So it's balancing all those things. And, you know, the cost to the parents, because that's what we're trying to be sensitive to, but not at the expense of the educational opportunity. Yep.
Some of the work is ongoing with the Social Studies and Science CDT processes and identifying resources for the units that they're developing and those types of things. But I think that some of the things that Chris was alluding to do involve some opportunities for parents maybe to have some choice. So I think we can easily find ways to build in a model. You know, the idea of balance was important, but I also know it was very important to the Board to try to move more toward open resources and get those fees down for families, and so we are trying to be responsive to that.
Yeah, it's just pragmatic, I think, is the word I'm trying to come up with. And then, I don't know, we talked about December financials. I think things are on track. Is there anything else I'm missing off of that? So that's it.
All right, any other Board communications? All right, we have two upcoming meetings, Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center, and Tuesday, February 26th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:30. With that, oh...
I apologize, just one quick question. The meeting that's this Thursday for the all-day kindergarten, is that an open meeting? Also, can community members come to that meeting? What's the...
That's not an open community meeting. We will have open community meetings at some point, but that is the first organizational meeting of the committee, and it has not, it would be a meeting where the various subcommittees that we talked about would start planning, you know, their timelines, their meeting dates, get all of the volunteers on the same page about what type of work we need to address in each of the areas to bring back information to the Board. So it's really not designed to be a public informational meeting, it's designed to be a working meeting for the committee.
How long will that meeting last?
We've got that scheduled for six.
Six to 7:30.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I have the start time right. Yeah, we think, my goal for that meeting is just to cover some informational things about the process so people know there was a study, there was, you know, there are certain things involved, and then get the subcommittees together to spend some time working together and calendarize their meetings and make sure that everybody's walking out the door on the same page about how we're going to set this process up. So as Mary said, we expect to be done at 7:30. There won't be a lot of decisions or things like that made that night, it's just about getting the work off the ground.
And there are community members on that committee, correct?
Yes, there's, I believe, are 13 community members that volunteered to be on the committee.
Okay, thanks. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. Thank you.